Monday, October twenty fourth, it is seven p.m., the regular commission meeting of the James Island Public Service Commission. Please stand for our prayer and place.
Power, I request please, Heavenly Father, as a master of ourselves, as we might come in service of others, take our minds and things to them, our lips and teaching them, in our hearts and set them on fire, all right?
Our flag will be lifted in the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all. For your Constitution Act, for your Constitution Act, and compliance with your Constitution Act, we will be receiving every word of the letter all received, and continue to press through the notification. Mr. Ron Crowe? Mr. Booker? Yes. Mr. Grant? Yes. Mr. Milken? Here. Mr. Paulson? Yes. Mr. Dooley? Yes. Number three, the proclamation honoring and recognizing Jeff Cohen, Assistant Director of our wastewater services. We honor and recognize the Assistant Director of Wastewater Services, Jeffrey Elliot Cohen, for his service to the James Island Public Service District. Whereas Jeff Cohen began his career in mechanical system performance with the James Island Public Service District's wastewater services department on November tenth, two thousand and four, and retired on October third, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas Jeff was promoted to wastewater maintenance and operating supervisor, July ninth, two thousand and seven, and whereas Jeff was promoted to Assistant Director of Wastewater Services, March twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, and whereas Jeff was instrumental in assisting with the successful provision of recovery services after severe storm damage and impalement, Jeff ensured early adoption of the James Island Public Service District's data software to remotely monitor all sixty-eight pump stations. Jeff was also instrumental in rehabilitation of numerous pump stations, lines and manholes with James Island Public Service District's wastewater systems. And whereas the James Island Public Service District is proud of our knowledge, the hard work, and dedication of its employees, Jeffy Cohen has applied his knowledge, training, encouragement for the betterment of our citizens and the service of our communities. Now therefore, I commission chair, on behalf of the James Island Public Service District Commission, to hereby extend a heartfelt thank you to Jeffy Cohen for your eighteen years of loyal service to the James Island Public Service District. Thank you for your service. Jeff, you walk your mouth and...
Walk.
There it was. All right, oral and written petitions, if anyone has to be back with something. Public comment period, the commission should be here in your third year, you should not expect the commission act to be the voice on something that is wrong during the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minister personnel, no personal or local act will be permitted. Comments should be relevant to the duty of responsibility and to that for the order. Comments requiring further investigation will be referred to in this procedure. If you sign in, please stand up and face the Indian dress, these are the conditions. You have no one...
I'm praying with me, and I signed up the camera, I thought you pulled me. But anyway, y'all all know me, I'm running for James Island, PSC Commissioner, it would be an honor to serve with you all. I have been active for about five years, I've been all over the news, and I'm really excited about the new energy and the positive energy, and it's great to see a group of people who can get along together, who send the government money that, you know, that they're... who send the government money that's there for us to spend, and I hope y'all get the fire station and the demo skits to keep us office, and that's fine.
And send agenda for the waste and waste committee, other fifteen matches, that's the one that could be taken, because this one, I just got one tiny change on discussion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the way the main committee made the minutes, and that's the first case of special, if anybody has any corrections, modifications. We'll call both, please. Mr. Ron Crowe?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you give the most...
Hi there.
Mr. President?
I admit...
So one of the reasons we're... Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Milken?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
Three, second, the special meeting is summer seventh. I make a motion to approve, I'm gonna get a second open today. I make a second, and just one tiny change. And that is that Mr. Tim Muller, our attorney, who's also present, he's to be taken, and was at the meeting and in our section of session. He's been just left out. You got one?
Yes.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other modifications, Mr. Director? Okay, we'll call both of you through the special meeting minutes with that notification as you're about to turn in. Mr. Ron Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Milken?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
Mr. Jerry, any questions? Regular commission meetings, summer twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, they approve of the minutes and make a motion to approve.
I am.
And any discussion, modifications? We'll call both, please. Commissioner Ron Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant? Mr. Milken?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
Motion, Chair, and Mr. Jerry. Number five, request, I'm sorry, request for purchase two F two fifty pickup truck from state contract.
All right, so your package contains a letter to Mr. Better, the Big Bailey Ford in Columbia, and this is the Ford dealership that won the state contract to sell government entities F two fifties in two thousand and twenty-three. So the district budgeted and ordered two F two fifties during fiscal year twenty-two last year. Unfortunately, the district was notified by Ford that demand trucks ordered far exceeded supply of the F two fifties produced by Ford last year. And this was due to the various supply chain issues and microchip shortages experienced across more than the Ford manufacturing, and the effects were certainly went broader than the state of South Carolina. So unfortunately, the F two S D did not, was in the same boat as many of the other local government entities once. We knew the trucks would not be purchased from the state contract last year, we kind of got creative. So the district carried their two vehicles from fiscal year twenty-two into the fiscal year twenty-three appropriations, and we were able to take possession of a Chevy twenty-five hundred in August of two thousand and twenty-two. And we still remain hopeful that the F three fifty crane truck will be ready to pick up by the end of November of two thousand and twenty-two next month. So we will be getting an update on the financial during the monthly district management report a little bit later. Some members of the commission can see, you got a regular line, O two, one fifty, five thirty, six oh four, just for wastewater vehicles, and this is one of the two pickup trucks that were included in last year's budget, carried orders into the this year fiscal year twenty-three budget. So the letter I'm asking the commission to authorize or allow the district to order two two thousand and twenty-three F two fifty that must be ordered by November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It puts the district in a position to potentially take possession of the trucks in July of two thousand and twenty-three, and that's to start from next year fiscal year twenty-four. There's no guarantee that the district will obtain new truck, but it has to place the order by the tenth of November to be considered a purchase from the state contract. So unfortunately, if the district does not order these two pickup trucks by the tenth of November two thousand and twenty-two, it would need, it would need to order potentially next November two thousand and twenty-three to potentially take possession of the trucks July of two thousand and twenty-four, and that's twenty-one months, or nearly two years from now. So I very much appreciate the consideration in authorizing these moves forward.
I make a motion. Mr. Department.
Okay. Can you hear me? Will you guys hear me?
I went online and I filled up a present schedule, twenty-two, twenty-three, and it has a list of specialty capital equipment, and it's one, you pull these trucks, fifty-five thousand, one crane truck, seventy-four thousand. So you don't want to order two?
So if you look at the O two, one fifty, five, what was I gonna say, five twenty, five thirty, six oh four?
Hey, you're gonna have to wait until you get there.
Sorry, in fact, it's the last page, if on wastewater, you have the last page of the packet. Page nine of nine in the detail. The O two, one fifty, five thirty, six oh four is the vehicle. So when you took possession and paid for a Chevy twenty-five hundred, and you can see in the second column here, they found through nine thirty, two thousand and twenty-three, it was fifty thousand, five ninety-six. And then you can see, if you go two columns over, the crane truck is more, that's a three fifty, and I said it with a crane, and that's seventy-eight thousand, four oh four. That was from last year's budget, that we were told, you're not getting any truck. So that's this year's budget, what we carried forward is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and what I'm asking for the commission, we're not getting a crane truck, we're getting two F two fifties for utility, which is gonna be approximately fifty-five thousand, for two of them for a hundred and eleven thousand. And that's all detailed in the quote from Mr. Better there, it looks like this.
Okay, I follow that. I thought you just said the crane truck is coming in a week.
Right.
Oh, we can, he, he, he's got a couple.
So this, this year, we're getting two trucks that we were supposed to get last year, there were no trucks to buy. We, once you, once you get, once the state contract says, we don't have any trucks to buy, that's when we're trying to work with the other dealerships to say, okay, we know we can't get a truck off state contract, what do you have? The problem is, we use the chassis that gets married to a work body that is allocated with a crane, you know, crane. They're short on all those that buy the crane truck, we wanted to buy in twenty-two, we're not, we're not getting that till now. There's just nothing to buy, and so we have to put our plates in line to say, Big Bailey Ford, we would like to buy new trucks. They can come back after November, when they get the orders, and say, again, there's no trucks to buy. And then we're left to privacy, okay, and we go back to Chevy, we make the rotation good with Chevy in Columbia, because that's what everybody had to do when Ford said, there's no trucks coming. So this is an authorization for us to put in our request and say, Mr. Better, will you put us on for two trucks? He might come back and say, you only get one off the state contract. He might come back like he did last year and just say, there's no trucks to buy, you gotta figure it out, you gotta figure it out elsewhere. But when we have the opportunity to buy on the state contract, maybe it was a fifteen percent discount, so that's if we wanna buy fifteen ten.
That was the fifty thousand we like, with fifteen percent discount?
Well, but that's fifty thousand is a cushion of, I think it could be a ten percent, because we don't know what the price increases are gonna be. We, we've seen this again and again, where they say, okay, it's not like it has to be where it's just like, here you go, this is what, based on your specification, all they're doing is saying, we'll give you a fifteen percent off the retail price, but that price could go up between now and when we take possession in July of two thousand and twenty-three, even based on those specifications.
Okay, so we can't watch the end of five, I'm sure.
So I, I build in a ten percent if I get, if they come in and they're fifty-five, instead of what you want, then we have the authorization to make that purchase.
And going with the state contract to get that deal, then go on to, so maybe we, we have the right, the reason that we want to, we're so eager to get a deal, is that we all, um...
Well, we gotta get on the list.
Right, and like all the other...
The point that I'm making about when you're on the state contract, it's a much cheaper than going through the dealer. You know, I'm saying, right, go on and put our way in, wait and see what happens. So I make a motion that means...
Well, you know, he's made, he's, he's, that's a, you know, it's a special.
Okay.
Yeah, we're telling you, so, yeah, you can say, what public you want, if you can get encumbered through the budget, like the encumbered through the budget, the, uh, the recovery through the budget, and I probably feel it's fifteen years. I haven't seen this kind of sending, I've just never seen this kind of future ordering, encumbering, projecting ahead. So what I'm looking at, the guard I did right now, we're on one quarter into the budget, we are nine days into the budget here, and we have, obviously, people that we voted for, or some, or actually some, voting for, and the question that I did, we could just want to order. They aren't in that budget, we're voting to be different, we're thinking of a future budget, but, you know, I, I just think we're projecting too much, and...
Yeah, unfortunately, we're coming in different times with vehicle orders. We saw it with the lighter truck for twenty-three months, we saw it with the automated site that were seventeen months. Um, production, the production is so far out there, unless you get a full list to buy, we've got another twenty-one months to potentially take possession of trucks off the state contract.
I don't, I don't even know what trucks we have in those, I, I would like to see a list of what we have, and like, you're saying all of the models, so... Before we encumber a future budget for a hundred and twelve thousand, it would be great to see a list of what we have. Thank you, Commissioner, um, question?
Well, it's very important because, it has, I, it's been, it's been, it's been, it's been, years before I elected to the commission, and it's very interesting, as everything has, because, I remember, when we ran it, it made where, having to be on a list and having to say, like, we have to think ahead, some of this is very, I mean, I wish that, um, Mr. Um, uh, we had to have a, I guess, uh, you were there, too?
Well, we got, we got Steve, and basically, what we're, what we're thinking to is, kind of, the trucks for, like... So, I know, we're, I don't know what that, that stuff was, what year that was, or... Because, I, I look approximately, uh, two thousand and ten. Um, unfortunately, like, we've not missed a mile, and also hours we have, and we're gonna...
Hours, of course, but their last hours actually wear down more quicker than miles, it's, it's, it's hard. You gotta, you know, I've been in the bus station, but, 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 you're so long, you're going, I learn quite a lot.
I, I don't get it, you trust the brain, you trust the mind, I don't get that, 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 you pray for the commission to have information, and the words that we want to do, and to see this, and everything we got, it's any, my...
There's a motion in a second, we're gonna have a real call, so now, can you... Well, yeah, we're gonna do this, like, twice around tonight, because we're not gonna be here all night, so, yes.
This part, it's facing, and I know this is a joke, it's, it's happening all the time, it's down, getting those parts, and getting them back together. We're probably coming out the flag, if we're telling this thing, coming, we're telling it right now, if it's gonna be in a budget, we can get it. But we're not getting parts, it's...
And I should have the rest before today, I have the time to give it, it's important.
And as he said, it runs, so it's not saying that's what we drive every day, or, 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 you know, it's, you guys, yeah, I mean, it's, I don't, not my communication, you see? I don't know about me, and, and, yeah, so you guys, what you have to do with this stuff is different than the, the shape, or, I don't know, the company's idea, though.
We're lost, right? I wish, we'll call both, please. Mr. Ron Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Milken?
No.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
Mr. Jerry, please, please. I understand the recommendation of the full commission, so we have to avoid the fire committee, I mean...
All right, so directly after that, um, information associated with the F two fifties, you have a letter, kind of, recommendation from the J I P S and fire committee, and so your package contains a letter summarizing the recommendation from the fire committee on Monday, the tenth of October, two thousand and twenty-two. And I appreciate the members of the commission considering authorizing me to reform the fire station number two project within fiscal year twenty-three appropriations. And just to be clear, that I'm not asking for additional funding, but for work, with RCA, come back with proposal, with permission of a later date, to continue efforts with the fire station two project. And all the while, while we're doing that, is to be able to, um, quantify, calculate, solidify, uh, budget items for fiscal year twenty-four, as far as, when we're talking in February, and we're talking in March, what, what are those cost costs associated in the fiscal year twenty-four budget, as far as, you know, if the commission wanted to report with schematic design that, um, we have, we're ready to be able to present that, okay?
I make a motion to authorize the district manager moving forward with fire station number two project within fiscal year twenty-three appropriations. Uh, I did that. The second? Go ahead. Well, I, I think I made that, I didn't clear how I, you know, my, my opinion of this, um, there's no reason why we can't put this on pause until February, January, I don't think the community is fully aware of it, because we still don't have the knowledge. Um, you know, so what we all would vote in to do tonight would be for the architect to keep working and keep billing us and negotiating with, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know, you're in, in this next door, and I, Dr. Gardner, negotiating with Dr. Gardner, when there are four seats up on this mission, that's the majority of this mission, we have been here before, we were here four years ago, and this caused quite a lot of work for me, I don't know, so if the folks can get that again in November, we'll be shepherding this fire station through. So it's either gonna be a bunch of people who have been here and are ready to go forward doing that, or it's gonna be a bunch of new people, or half and half, you don't know. But this is a major decision for the community, I'm just, so just may, so please, put this on pause if it's January one, or in February, until we know about the building. Any other comments?
I think we're just, um, I think we should put on page...
Okay.
I think in fairness to Dr. Gardner, he has to know something, and if we put this on pause, this is gonna drop down the ladder. And, um, I also feel like, if January comes, and the new people decide to stop things, they can not be stopped. You're not supposed to stop the community. If you put the question on, it won't, yeah. But, um, I think it's, it's so much over. I don't think we're paying aside, we're, we're, we're the last, people work for the last one. And, um, I've, um, I've been here for twenty-five years, I've been down at station two, it doesn't matter, I wouldn't be moving there. So we need to think about, find a place where there is, I mean, there were rats, snakes, everything, and I know that. I went in here, I went from here in, so let's just tell them, we can put this off, and just put it off, or these guys have to, they're gonna explode. So I'm ready to go, but, yeah, they're going.
And as I've been said, this is all preliminary...
The best station has been there ever.
And that is worth, because you don't know, because there are different hands, but you can do it forward, you don't know exactly the cost, and they'll, it's kind of a one, right? You never determine that, you can do it forward. Um, but, yes, I also agree with that, and if we truly, because that, I am trying to do a work there, it's true.
We'll call both, please. Mr. Ron Crowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Booker?
Yes.
And Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Milken?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair, for the team. Number eight, recommendation for the full commission from the October tenth administration committee meeting.
All right, so right after the letter, um, concerning the reservation for the fire committee, you have, um, the recommendation from the J I P S C administration committee, and so based on the recommendation from the administration committee, members of the commission may consider emergency to authorize proposed changes to the J I P S C policy manuals, and I appreciate the consideration of the plan.
I make a motion to approve the operating rate of the proposed changes, the James Island Public Service District's policy manual. Second, like, maybe your policy with session. I, um, I didn't have quick move, or... I don't know if you can actually law school people on this, or if the community's ready to call, but so often, our chair makes every mention on, on accident, I guess. And I'm just wondering if you can look into that, because, um, that's unusual, you know, in meetings with a chair who is new for everything. Well, it's always been silent, so I'm not gonna sit and wait for somebody else to make a motion, but...
Right, it does matter, I mean...
I think that's a very different, like, guy.
Any commissioner...
So, so that's typical, like, most people.
I don't know what's typical, I just know that there are any commissioner...
Okay, I just wanted to say...
I've never seen anything that I can, that has happened.
In all, if there's a committee recommendation or a committee report, the person, or, maybe, that's, that's not, that's not a motion from any committee.
Well, um, that's true, that, any commission can, can, um, make a motion, and, so, um, I don't have any, you know, um, nothing.
And I was, um, I think, she's also reading out, and she's wanting to move to a first, but she's just saying, I also think, and I, the line, maybe, is a bit...
Okay, I make a motion, so...
That's what I'm saying, so she started speaking, so I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I think I, um, what I'm, my concern about the name, the director, like, do you really need to prove this? So I don't know, I mean, that, I mean, I know what... Commissioner, Frank?
Yes, I just have a question, um, a lot of the, most of the, um, meetings, they say that you all, that, that, or, maybe, who's got, who's got... I thought you were saying, so, so, who's got, maybe, or, maybe?
Yeah, because they just, he's forty years old, so...
I understand, but so, so I don't think I'm supposed to, I don't think it's important to the funders. Is that not what you want?
No, she's not getting something.
Do you all think so, it's important? And if, if so, if she's certified, there's certain sort of protection and HR person you could have. So that's my question, and my other question, I guess, would be Cameron, yourself, or either Ed. Do you all have those sorts of things in your time to HR? And if someone like ours, and it's not, then you get them. And if someone would have your call.
So right now, um, my underwriting was business management, like two concentration, one is human resource management, um, and the other is marketing. And I, um, so I also, you know, have legal resources to be able to pass legal definitions, because it's related with, if there's an, there's an issue. Um, we have had, you know, we have had attorneys, um, involved in the, uh, any kind of investigation. And we have them who we've seen, uh, to be able to help us get through the issues if they're hot.
So again, anyone have heard, continue to go with my case. Like certain sort of protection is mostly for our executive staff, or when you say, I don't need to ask them to support it. Does she have any HR certification?
And as far as like the churn?
Yes.
No, I don't believe you get the churn, but I can, I can get a link to those, uh, you know, qualifications.
Moving forward, is there something that you all are going to consider yourself with Cameron as a person? Some record or Ed to get some type of certification? Because honestly, we all go sometimes yes for everything, but when it comes to employee quality, I feel we're going to need an employee to be certified if we don't have someone with some type of expertise in me. I mean, even when it comes to ADA compliance, anything, I, I feel they need someone that say, hey, this person is certified. This person has the expertise. And if you all aren't certified, passing certification, do you have a plan for it? And it's so difficult to talk, because it's just a way of position. And I would assume that you all, when you afford the position, you afford it in the industry as well. Is there a purpose or disqualification in employees that they have no one that has expertise to go to? You know, I, I really, I have the other old one, and I really, and I read the new one. And we talked about certificating as going to the president, director, manager. Does she have any clearance that for, I only think, I'm glad it was a minor HR that there's some of these units. I just think that if we just wait to position as an HR director, that employees need someone. And if we can't implement this all, go where for everything, when it should, some type of person with some type of specialty, what do you? After the employee's question is needed.
Well, I can, I can tell you, I mean, you mentioned, for example, ADA compliance. So I've been here less than two years, and you've actually gone through, um, an issue related to ADA compliance. And I obviously got the lesson from those gifts and him as we want to do that. And during the provide that expertise on what the law says, what the district needs to do. We also have, you know, in the policy manual, there's, there is information about ADA compliance. And so all of that came through multiple versions of legal review. Uh, prior to when I started, then went through a fine new column with Rosa Haygood as far as September of twenty twenty. We then made updates again last year, September of twenty twenty one. And now the fall of twenty twenty two, and we continue to make updates. There's the new policy manual, it's kind of a living or even doctrine where it might previous role. This, if that's not the annual, the more frequently updated, as far as things change, laws change. And that's how we make continuous updates. We, we done it past three years in the fall.
Okay, and then we have to say, we can enjoy this or that, this, this. Every time you go through, we just question, there's a call. So to me, when we go ask the people, if you possibly HR director or person that specifically handles that and don't have the expertise or company, can you deal with it anymore that's constantly having HR question? As many, I mean, as for me, um, can we actually miss answer questions if an employee has specific A R related? I mean, it's not legal, I can have an HR department, but as a total service district, can a new employee can do, if an employee can do service by not having any experience personally, that's my opinion. I, I, I didn't think it's important. And also when it comes to data entry, a lot of commissions, there is nothing in this handbook that specifically gives a person like in order in different roles that they play. I understand operations, you see a person who deals with operations every day, but we still go by our own data points. Experience, of course, takes place in presence, as I understand, when you're out in the field. But you should have something inside of this handbook that specifically gives them more of a benefit. I mean, we're talking about long longevity employees. And some of them get this basically as upwards through, because we have nothing understandable to reflect their basic needs. So I think we really need to implement certain things before, as we begin our, before we have. It's not something that's going to reflect us personally, but this is something for employees. And you know, it's very.
No, I'm wondering if you said maybe what, what I, uh, some of these, uh, what people, I don't know, you know, you go. So there's a, any sort of issue in the, that they're going to, I think, to argue, I think. And it's, 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 it's something that, it's something that, that's my opinion. So I was.
Because I would also like to clarify, as far as the, um, we mature, um, Milton talked about the recommendations of the HR director and the HR director, uh, was retired.
No, 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 no.
And, and so that, that was discussed at the regular commission meeting, the twenty seventh of June. And you, you, um, asked me for clarification, that was, uh, uh, around forty minutes into the meeting. And so we went back and forth, I can do the same interview in June, as I did in, in October, as far as how we were streamlining, how we were, um, you know, going up positions, I don't know. Because we also asked for clarification. So once we went forward with, okay, this, our HR director retiring in June, that was Ed Malvina, myself, Cameron, Legal, all going through the process of making these updates so that he could move forward appropriately.
Okay, that should have been administrative, committee, as you well know, all of those decisions that come before the mission. But if it's within, you're going, you're going to do the office meeting, that's all within your party as district manager. And that is what it is. But when you announce something and you ask questions, that's one thing, versus it becoming an agenda item. Now it has become an agenda item where a permanent decision, or semi-permanent decision, or a way manual decision is made on this call. So now it's even kind of the commission does weigh in, not when it's in a district manager report, where really, historically, we're just, what's called as, that we ask question. Uh, you know, when we go to district manager report. So I realize that less matters, but this is the first time extended to the item of the commission. So, uh, I ask, is this conversation there between, is it you and the attorneys and all those comments?
All those comments go back to September of twenty twenty and leading up to the change in September of twenty twenty. After September of twenty twenty, um, that was.
They're disagreeing, they're through, gotcha, gotcha, they reply, we don't, it's a conversation.
Between, uh, legal counsel and, uh, the partner.
Okay, so is this the wrap? You wanted to give us mine with all those comment areas?
I, I basically, that is a extra markup of the, um, derivative of the prior legal counsel to come and change September of twenty twenty one, to demonstrate that, um, this has been through extended legal review, uh, back and forth between one of the agents, the district. Um, that was in addition to everything that I presented towards changes at the committee meeting, where I highlighted the October being prime department, the yellow being assistant district manager, and the green being district manager. Just to kind of, um, demonstrating a level of detail of the changes.
So when we've gotten, bring the boxes, um, is that new, or is that ship to him, or it says, let's suggest the, this is very unclear, on versus what it seems.
Right, because I have made modifications. I just remember all the things that have been addressed in the workbook prior to September of twenty four. This has come a long way over the last three years. And these changes have been, um, ongoing.
Okay. May I ask, from a legal standpoint, I think points have been made that are valid, whether in HR or in the district or not. I think that's a different discussion. For purposes of the policy that's reported tonight, right now, we have a policy in place that refers to the theory to a, to a employee's. Um, because the way the policy is written, the forty provisions are in place, and that's what the resources, right, which doesn't exist. So there's a void, and this policy that's reported, right, former November, corrects that void by correcting the forty to the top of the channels map. Now, if a month from now, it comes back to.
Where are we going?
Well, that's, that's what I'm wanting, is if a month from now, it comes back to the commission, and they think we're going to hire a human resource director, then we would have to revise the policy again and put them back in, right, I got the void. And there was no, I guess, there was no clarification within the policy before to put that void in this, with the changes that we have included. So this addresses that, um, just the way you said.
Well, um, I went through this manual, it's fine. Um, yeah, um, the only part of the time that you have problems without, you have them sitting there. That is the time that everybody's been taught. Now, the district manager, it's quiet, it's a candy, it's a single day, it's day, um, activity. We are committed, we are responsible for the budget, the other, day to day operation is not obvious. If I don't like something that day is doing, I could call and deal with him on a one-on-one and talk to him about my concerns. So he, he has quite something in place. If you don't like it, well, that's a bit of a time before we can, well, it doesn't work. I agree that enjoying someone's ability. You know, I'm for employees and going to have someone that they can talk to. They will not have one, I know that, for that. But let's, now that we have this, it's like, let's give it a try. If it doesn't work, let's handle it. But please feel free to try before you decide that it doesn't work, let's try it. If it doesn't work, we can say, and that's a lot. I'm done.
And I think the thing is, if it doesn't work, my, my thing was just go with the, some of the certifications and orders to address the needs of the employees.
I, I'm with you, I understand that this is not the time, we've been raising this up as a later day. Let's talk about that, because that makes sense. But already we have something in place, if not, we have nothing, we have something in place. It may not do what you like at this point, or you not feel like, all right, let's buy it. And then if it doesn't work, let's try, day I don't like it, and go with what they.
That's my idea. Little of the week, uh, commissioner Brown, it would be a possibility if some commission wanted to to cast this term with a requirement that day and Cameron go through and complete HR training in the next twelve months. That would be a possibility. So I just want to say, we don't have to be bossed in. What I would like to see happen is the commission to abandon a part of the decision to exceed which permanently the HR director position. I wish that that had come to us, where at least it retired. So there's that. But I certainly respect, respect the witness view, having worked for the federal government, knowing the different bodies that deal with employees. What is especially concerning is that our employees to lot of vehicles, they get an accident, they get hurt on the job. You have some serious stuff that goes on. You have firemen, you, you know, I, I don't want to think about things, you know, something happens, yep. And that we, we wouldn't have an HR manager and an HR division. So if it was the case that, I, I won't be going to that. But I feel like a portion of commissioners may have led to believe that this was fine. It certainly is a part of me, and, um, I see Chip's point that right now we have an employee manual that is, if you want to freshen it, it doesn't make any sense. It's doing our employees' service, that is very, you can say, if we didn't cast this line, if you all received South Carolina HR training, where would that may be? And I'm sure that South Carolina Association of Public Service Districts can help. But that would be the administration that I would like to do.
There's also two per, um, alternatives. I'm pretty as well, that works with organizations that, um, have contracted for, um, fractional HR roles. So, um, for example, when I was a city booker, he did not have HR director. Um, we had a fractional attorney that showed up one of the weeks, that's in the union environment. And you have, if it's a contract, so if there's a agreement, if there's something filed, that person can deal with that. And you also have, uh, if there's not one of them, if you, they can work on updating policies, they can work, work on updating the plan, that type of thing. I can come back and, uh, be able to provide, uh, options associated with that. As far as like, um, fractional, um, HR related roles. And we can discuss that in fiscal year twenty four funding discussion, as we see, you know, as we go through it. I can, I can bring that up.
Definitely, and, and, and what we do, and we are all these, I'm just wondering, the HR director, five, the, um, thousand, now we're thinking about HR, I think it's a contract person, um, I guess, he was legal, we, we worked down on the call. And also, because there was an increase, would you all join these extra duties as well? Because it's worth going eight thousand, ten thousand, twelve thousand, or different dollars. What's the person coming out having HR director, someone that's useful that comes in, that's my question, you know? I was just like, um, for us to ask you tonight, and then, um, when it comes to come up again, let's, you know, there, and, uh, I'll help you, I'll, 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 that, continue to, uh, just, but we got.
Commissioner Brown, proud?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford? Yes. Commissioner Grant? Yes. Commissioner Nolte? Yes. Commissioner Paulston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilby?
Yes.
Um, I, yeah, yeah. Commissioner, yes. Phil, Paul, John, Paul, Phil, Nate, and Pat. Oh, thank you so much. We, we, we got it. We thought. We got it. Thank you, Art. That was.
You know, Paul, Art.
The motion of the board, let me say.
I second it. Like, to, to reconsider. A motion to reconsider, because, yep, so he said that there are other options available. So now for the second, we have a discussion about reconsidering. So we're not boss women, he's suggesting. He's done it for options where perhaps we have to try and pay somebody a fraction, not ninety thousand dollars.
Well, I understand, honestly, we're talking about, we're talking about, we're talking about, and I think, along with that, so we've got a, a manual that.
That's a board of eight.
That, that, you know, it just one year, and we want to do something about it.
One year. Yes, and I, I used to know exactly, if where, because, then, you know, and then, you know, it's, 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 it's. That's it. You leave all of this, and so we, we, so leave there, there's something, you know, so much in there.
So from a legal standpoint, current policy doesn't. Right. And grievance and file line employee litigation. So if there is no human resources, the employee will invite it. But policy that's reported for you, gives them a person to go to, that may not be, you know, a viable option that anybody at their court, that it is. But policy that you're for you gives them a person to go to that may not be, you know, a viable option that anybody at their point would abuse. Look at that gap now, I mean, personally, it it the intent to come up with a different option, you can look at. You know, maybe adjustments to different what grievance goes to, or the people go to the uh payroll issues or something like that. Right now, there is a void in the policy where every employee that's dropped is used. The four years left, not the MSK is what they're.
I know, I'm sorry, I can't.
Well, and so if you can make that sense, then there is um you can now have, I guess, a few of those. One or two of them are reported, they're saying people are.
Correct, too much enough to hire a human resources person, why doesn't it matter? Put it back the way it was, there's there's no, there's no language in the policy that says in the absence of the human resources. That's a problem. Um have that language that is in there, then you would have, you'd have to work around it, but the way that it was written, it doesn't give you a if not this, then this. It means that this and that. He works with you, you're not here.
I mean, if I may, if I may, one option, if you if you go back to a motion, I guess, to prove this. With the condition that day and camera have a community for training for the next twelve months. I believe we both got promotions and raises. It's not unusual that we could get promotions and raises to have extra training. So that we have collaborative commission and to respect everything coming through, especially at the pain point of view. Um there's no reason not to vote the motion to reconsider down. You then entertain a new motion, whereas the commissioner may want to pass this policy manual with the condition. If the three posts identified in the manual receive AHR training within the next twelve months.
I'm not sure whether these people are necessarily agree that would be all needed and have to be first appropriated. And then, well, I look like I have a big, you know, just for the period of time, so we decide or there's there's.
Well, I can understand why women are just about whatever, he's presenting other options, so, yep, would y'all like to amend the motion, you know, motion for?
Okay, so I would like to, I mean, the demand of change, there's one thing that would be voting to take. Um human resource director, equipment, equipment director, or different managers, but there's other changes in there too. So that's another thing we can amend, we actually, if the void appears no HR director. But all the other changes did not do something that we have to hold to vote on. This that word, we take away the AHR director.
And I don't think there are other changes. The the changes that are in there, um some other exchanges, some of the exchanges, the finance department. But as far as substantive changes, there are none, the majority of the changes are in the agreements. My senior, because there is no HR to work through that grievance. Right.
I would like to, I would like to find, or um on that side, it's going to be both obviously used to say, is that right? Again, we both. Going to go to. No, I'm sorry, though.
So right now, the motion on the floor is being read through, but second on that. If that discussion, maybe a vote on that voting to reconsider, if the motion to reconsider passes, maybe you have another opportunity to report ever voting. Before the motion you want to bring the grievance.
It's what everybody thinks, it could be two bucks. So on the level, but everybody also is there to the initial vote, can you amend it? We don't have to reconsider passing it off, passing it in there.
Oh, yeah, I reconsider the vote of the voting table. But right now, there was a vote in which on on a prior motion failed. So that becomes done, if there was a motion to reconsider the vote.
That's a really.
You can't, you can't amend the votes in the voting table.
But so now you're saying we can do that on Monday? You can say?
No, what I'm saying is, if you vote to reconsider, then the next motion after that, if the voting to reconsider passes. Am I going to make the same exact motion that started fail, or should I amend it differently?
So. Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wulff?
Yes.
Motion carries for.
Why make the, I make the.
I like. May I make a note?
Go, go, sheer, go and make it.
I, oh.
I make a motion, no, first the positions and AHR directors in one week.
That's one more. It's the same package. Uh Chip, do you get some, I can't even. Where do we start the topic?
Right.
Are you have a work paper on the license?
May I run my meeting as a discussion? I want to make sure, yes, yes, and I'm making a work.
Um, that's interesting, that is, AHR director, but personally, I thought the phone was going to be back in May, and I was getting it back to the budget. I thought it was already closed, we're not even going to find ninety thousand dollars to pay them back. And um we don't have a policy to set uh in certain areas, it's very hard. Um, it's two two years and we get, then it up, send it back to a literally maybe to discuss it in here. All the discussions and discussions should have been discussed as we leave. And um I feel like we could even perhaps work in, I think the motion should be for.
Well, the motion on the floor for the second, to um have an AHR search, which still doesn't pick that up.
About my motion, my motion is to poke the positions from AHR directors in one week. And it's second on this one.
What call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
No.
Commissioner Clifford?
No.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wulff?
Yes.
Motion carries for.
Okay. Item nine, summer district manager report.
Um, we still have to, we can start from the beginning, I don't know. I'm going to have to have nothing to do with that. I make a motion that we um. Um, I make a motion that we um pass this. New employees.
Motion, I thought the, the tag that was done, the story options.
I make a motion, so I uh I think that should be a separate motion. We only have one separate motion, but um so our information that we um pass is contained in there. That's a question. What call vote, please? Commissioner McRae?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wulff?
Yes.
Motion carries for.
Number nine, summer district manager report.
Alright, so we've got a lot going on in the district right now, um we can get through, my report will pay questions at the end. I want to thank all participants that attended the adopted highway litter pickup on Saturday the fifteenth of October. Community appreciates your efforts to keep the James Island clean, there Clifford and uh Mr. Cantrell going to clean up and thank you for your effort. Thanks to all the stakeholders that have participated in the J I D S D community survey. Uh the community survey information was presented to the commission last Monday, the seventeenth of October during the Ways and Means Committee meeting. And um as mentioned, by Joe Borsham, every member of the commission got surveyed this afternoon. And uh that is your uh ability to go in and rank uh the importance of initiatives by the uh district uh moving forward with this treaty plan. Um to facilitate the annual J I D S D employee appreciation event on Thursday, the seventeenth of November. The J I D S D customer service window will be closed for two hours from eleven thirty AM to one thirty PM. The district is nominated for a opening annual employee appreciation event in twenty nineteen. So it's exciting to be able to get all employees gathered together next month. Um the effort, the J I D S D departments perform hurricane and storm recovery effort certainly demonstrates that our organization has much to appreciate when it comes to J I D S D employees. The D S D employees provide.
Very um progress, you know, um um the employees, is that November seventeen, what time?
Thursday at noon, and that's at the Edisto County Shelter within the county park.
Okay, I see.
And all members of the commission are invited to that. So um the J F D S D employees provide one hundred percent of services to the resident. We after the storm effects aside from hurricane Ian, we accrue um all the island all weekend to begin storm recovery effort. And that's where our employees may happen, so the community acquires essential services to the most, the most. The worst storm effects were felt from James Island Friday the thirtieth of September twenty twenty two. Task one, hurricane force winds produce large quantities of vegetative storm debris. The rest assessment of solid waste services department began winter recessions finished by driving the daily route. To estimate quantity of storm debris beginning Saturday the first of October. As more residents had an opportunity to get more storm storm debris, the amount of storm debris continued to mount over the weekend. The normal Monday, our mission yard degree collection round began on Monday, the third of October, twenty twenty two. I provided to the commissioner the details for how the solid waste crew can be cleared the Monday route of storm debris. Before moving into the normal Tuesday collection route. The heaviest hit area of James Island that produced the most storm debris for normal Wednesday collection round through the storm path of Hurricane Ian. These are the neighborhoods of Fort Johnson Road, Fort Johnson State Harbor Road, Clearview Drive, and Leeswood subdivision. Solid Waste Department ran ran solitary overtime crew on Friday the seventh, Saturday the eighth of October. Again, Friday the fourteenth and Saturday the fifteenth of October. And most recently, last Friday the twenty first of October. Thanks to all members of the Solid Waste Department, continued the storm debris recovery effort. And the extra effort greatly appreciated by the community resident. In a press release, Monday the third of October, Charleston County declared that emergency contractor would not be mobilized for the city local aid with storm debris recovery effort. It was much gratitude that the town of James Island mobilized a hauling contractor capable of removing piles of large tree debris. That the J F D S D equipment is not capable of moving. The J F D S D equipment is capable of removing eight inch diameter branches of log that are cut no more than six feet in length. When residents place uh much larger diameter logs on the curb. The D S D relies on emergency contractor typically typically mobilized by Charleston County during the storm debris recovery. Caused by the effects of hurricane. The J F D S D appreciates the residents that can form tree service and landscaping company. That is, that is the responsibility of those contractors to haul away the piles of large tree storm debris. Especially piles of large tree debris in excess of the eight inches in diameter and longer than sixty in length. The hauling company is in town, James Island mobilized and still working to clear the piles of large tree debris. We appreciate the continued efforts of the resident as the J F D S D solid waste crew transitioned back into normal operation. It was a hope that the D S D solid waste crew will not have to run voluntary overtime this Friday, the twenty eighth of October. The solid waste crew will continue to catch up with the bulk debris debris route of manmade items such as appliances and furniture. All the equipment associated with that has been dedicated to storm debris for the past couple of weeks. During hurricane Ian, the fire department staff beginning the evening of Thursday the twenty ninth of September. And this was to ensure safety of all the fire employees, practicing their stations and renting equipment, beginning clearing roadways during storm recovery effort. In addition to insurance, we have doubled the normal requirement on shift of two freight shifts. The fire department staff and other two firemen on a brush truck provide additional support clearing storm debris off the road. These efforts to ensure that the roads are passable and a fire apparatus can take humanity, the roads in case of emergency. The wastewater crews began storm recovery effort that Friday evening after the storm uh began running twenty four hours a day. The wastewater crews were able to begin ensuring that the wastewater system was headed back to normal and Dominion Energy was restoring power to the affected pump station. The wastewater crews ran generators for the pump station without functioning power, ensuring the system, the system was functioning at best as possible during storm recovery effort. So this was my first case of storm recovery effort from a category one hurricane. I'm happy to report to the commission that the D S D team members, all together in a local fashion, provide timely storm recovery effort to our residents. We continue to monitor progress through Charleston County, uh South Carolina Emergency Management Division, and FEMA. Officials from both the town of James Island and the district went to the county official regarding storm debris, S C P M D and FEMA. We discussed joint preliminary damage assessments, and that's last Wednesday, the nineteenth of October. So if there is a declaration in the future, we track all of our costs associated with that. To give you an example, Hurricane Irma wasn't declared in twenty seventeen, so twenty months later. So we could track all of our stuff, cross our fingers that this is opened up for future uh reimbursement. So as we work through this process, I will be able to commission a prize as far as um how that's working. So just to go briefly on the financials, if you look at a roll up claim like this, um roll up claim in your report. The target is twenty five percent, three months reported, meaning July, August, and September of twenty twenty two have been reported. So um what I had mentioned before, as far as the vehicle, you will see the same thing in um the general fund, O one, one oh five, five thirty, six oh six. You'll see that is the in numbers fund associated with this year, this year twenty three, for the dump truck and the automated sign temper. Associated with the um solid waste cost center. So as as we go through here, this should give you an update, that twenty five percent target. Um right now, the general fund is at twenty six point four, just slightly over. That's the two point six million actual divided by the appropriations of the nine point uh nine million, nine hundred and seventy one thousand. But that increase, that that's slightly over, is those covered funds associated with trucks, we hope to get either May or June of twenty twenty three. You can see the same thing, as I mentioned prior, in O two, one fifty, five thirty, six oh four. And that's the purchase of the shedding twenty five hundred truck for fifty thousand, five ninety six. And then remaining seventy eight thousand, four oh four, new purchase of the F three fifty frame, hopefully for to receive next month. Um, obviously, those trucks were intended to be purchased in fiscal year twenty two. And after we make the order for the state contract, we will hear back and forth as far as if we're going to be able to proceed with the state contract or if we have to get creative. If we have to get creative, that'll make sure to come back to the commission for proof. And that's what I have for my management.
I've got a question. Um, this we came for on page one of mine. What do you call it, Steve?
Like the detail, so like years of big budget versus that pool?
Okay, so years of big details, was the town of James Island maintenance revenue? So that was high in terms of the cost, the town to pay us to maintain the vehicles or something? But we didn't bet anything for that, so it's about one hundred and six thousand. But they have transferred to us for repickup?
I don't, I don't know, I would have to go look at that, see what they're wanting.
Well, it's line two row one, two row, three row, four six three point oh two.
Right.
Now, that's what's our maintenance revenue. That was back to the F D route?
Right.
So is this the money, have they transferred the money for the repickup?
No, the town of uh James Island maintenance revenue is, I believe, the amount that they pay for us to maintain their vehicles. They bring them over to the shop for seats, but I can, I can dive under that one. They bring them over to the shop for seats, but I can, I can guide under that one.
That's one of the one oh three, when we, when we, when we, when we...
Okay.
Four oh three, five... I guess.
I can, I can look in, I can look into that, if I can get back to...
I think it's probably, probably, it's probably, it's probably...
Yes, it's, uh, one oh three dash five thirteen point oh six, probably, you know, like...
Yeah, it was all lying, probably, down, down, down.
Well, um, you know, government, if you have regulations, you know, with the tax cover that we have, that this is new and different, ten and fifty thousand, it's just out of the country, it's probably, it's probably, yeah.
Well, probably, it's probably, it's probably...
Right, right.
It's like, what, do this?
I can, I can look at the line and get back the fire...
The amount, it's, um, those are four, seven thousand dollars, okay, but that is ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, probably, about... Okay. I mean, if you could tell, I would, I would, I would, without, I don't know, maybe, maybe, I don't know. I think that's my question. Any, yes?